On November 4th, 2013, this meeting of the Planning Board is now called to order. The first item on the agenda is an Aquarian presentation. Going to discuss some of the South Hingham Water Study. Before I acknowledge the representatives from Aquarian, I do want to note for the audience that we do, we're happy to have our colleagues from the HDIC with us tonight, so thank you for joining us.
Phil, just as a side note, we posted this as one of our meetings also, so let me just call that to order as well.
Thank you, duly noted, in a minute. Okay, we do have with us Aquarian, is it Blake, first name, sir?
Yep.
You have the floor.
My name is Lloyd Lucas, I'm the Director of Operations for Grand Water Company. And first of all, I want to thank the Planning Board and HDIC for inviting us here tonight to present South Shore Industrial Park. As many of you know, the presentation was originally on August 4th, then by the HDIC, by John Walsh, the DEV Operations. It was his intention to also include this presentation on, but unfortunately we were scheduled to talk about it. So, just so everyone knows, this is just a brief presentation on water supply or water infrastructure value that can get on the South Shore industrial park. We know that the town has plans to eventually look to develop this property and we wanted to make sure that we made, we knew and the town knew what water infrastructure needs were going to be needed for the project. And we used build out projections that we had received on the hangup TV that we... So this is the, this is how our infrastructure currently exists within the South Shore Industrial Park area. You can see all the green dotted lines are where we have water infrastructure. We don't have much in the area of South Shore Industrial Park at this time. And, um, the next slide, in order to accommodate any sort of build out in the South Shore Industrial Park, the water mains will be installed as shown on this plan. They included in South Shore Park, we also have the Bristol Brothers property up off Old Derby Street, and we did include the location of the Avalon. And we know that may not be on the table anymore, but we just want to make sure that we included everything for long-term water. So we'll get into a little bit about water demand that we have. This shows 2004 to 2012, and as you can see, our demand on a yearly average is pretty consistent throughout that time period. You know, seasonal fluctuations and yearly fluctuations based on amount of precipitation can cause a little up and down, but for the most part, it's stayed pretty consistent. And you can see the breakdown between Accord Pond, which is about 25% of our source supply, and the wells, we have nine active wells that consist of 75% of our source supply. Now, water in Massachusetts is regulated by Mass Department of Environmental Protection through the Water Management Act. And in 1987, when the Water Management Act went into place, Aquarians, at the time, it was a different company, but now owned by Aquarian, the registration limit that we have is 3.51 million gallons per day. That's an average throughout the year that we have to stay below to comply with the registration statement. And you can see current, I believe that is 2012, we are about 3.31 million gallons per day, average. Obviously, in the summertime, we exceed that on a single day or multiple day basis, but that's perfectly fine as long as our running average is below the 3.51. In 2009, Mass DCR provided projections on the population growth and development in Hingham based on information they received from the Planning Board and other various departments within the town. And their projections show us by 2030 actually being close to the 4 million gallons per day on average. And so what we did for our evaluation is we then included what the SSIP and the Bristol Brothers property would put us above and beyond that. And at that point, we're about 4.3 million gallons per day on average. So clearly, for just development and potential population growth based on DCR's recommendations, we will be reaching this limit and we certainly will be after any sort of build out in SSIP or Bristol Brothers. So we'll get into a little bit about what is required to get a new source of supply, which is something that may need to be looked at based on those projections. So the state has requirements of being able to demonstrate the need. So, for example, we have a registration statement. If we wanted to go and get a permit, we would actually need to demonstrate that there's going to be development and growth within the community before they would even allow us to go in front of them looking for a permit. The approval process for permits is very intensive and very expensive. The, I would say on average, three to five years, depending on different permit conditions. And one thing that would hold true, would likely hold true for us would be inter-basin transfer. That would be something that we'd have to include in there. Currently, our sources all come from the Weir River watershed, which has been classified as a stress basin. So if we were going to be looking for a new source, DEV would likely not give us additional water out of our existing sources because of the condition of the basin and where we're drawing from. They would also not be keen on us looking for another source within the same basin. So we're likely to be restricted to outside that basin, which puts us in that inter-basin transfer act, which is just another layer of permitting. We did have a rough estimate put together on what a new source would cost, and the projection was about 1.5 million. That was strictly based on new source outside of Weir River watershed, no treatment necessary, and that price was only DEV permitting and well drilling and everything to actually get the well up and running, not legal fees or actually purchasing the property. That brings up another aspect of it. As I said before, we actually have a registration statement, which doesn't come with a lot of conditioning for Mass DEV. As soon as we look to grow our source of supply, we will fall under the realm of permitting, which, once we do that, all of our withdrawals fall under that permit as well. And with that permit comes other restrictions that the state would actually mandate us to do. And some of them have to do with unaccounted for water, how many gallons per person per day are used. And then the bigger one is mandatory watering strategy. Permits today require mandatory uneven watering from May 1st to the end of September, which is something that we only have to implement under our registration statement if we see that we're getting close to that 3.51 million gallons a day on average special. There's also new regulations coming through. Mass DEP has been working for the past four years on the Sustainable Water Management Initiative, and that is going to add a whole nother layer to future permitting, and we believe that that will be in place in 2014. And that specifically speaks to stress basins. And if you are looking at permitting a new source in a stress basin, you actually have to be able to look at different offsets to make sure that you are not overstressing the basin any further than what it already is. And I will speak to one thing that we have implemented, Aquarian Water Company, that is, that is kind of a step ahead, is the Water Balance Plan. And the Water Balance Plan is something that we have that any new user, new developer that is projected to have 100,000 gallons per year used, then we require them to fill out an application for the Water Balance Plan, and then they must offset all their water usage through means of retrofitting older buildings that have high-flow toilets or other fixtures, or there's also the ability to fund, put money to fund for us to use the money for the same purpose. So as I mentioned before, there was a lot of water mains that needed to be installed to actually get built out in the South Shore Industrial Park. The other thing that comes into play is the Insurance Services Office. They have recommendations. So currently, the capacity, fire flow capacity in South Shore Industrial Park is 1,000 to 2,000 gallons a minute. ISO recommends a little over 2,000, and then the typical maximum recommended is 3,500. So that's another thing that we would actually have to try to meet in order to build out South Shore Industrial Park and not see the insurance rates for the area go up. So there's four options that we're looking to do, and I'm just going to go over the overview of all four options. The four options were actually broken down to the different levels. So for example, what would need to be done in this option to provide 2,250 gallons a minute fire flow, and then what would also have to be done for 3,500, so you can see what the costs are going to one to the other is. So in option one, it's strictly just replacing water mains. It's upsizing existing mains that are 12-inch and 8-inch, some smaller, and upgrading those to 20-inch and 16-inch. Now, option two would be to install a booster pump station right adjacent to Route 3. And what this would do is this would actually boost the water flow and pressure within the system that it feeds, and that would also suffice for meeting fire flow demand. The third option was to run a main under Route 3. Now, one of the reasons why we looked at this option is because the town is potentially looking at this for their sewer main. So we thought that we might be able to run two mains at the same time and have the water and sewer be next to one another, and this would also serve the purpose for getting the fire flow necessary. And the fourth option, which I think would be the recommended option, is actually constructing a new water tower within the South Shore Park area. There is land that is at the right elevation that if we had 100, 110-foot tank, that we could meet the same hydraulic capacity as the Accord tank, which currently feeds that service, service area. And this option, go to the next slide, is the preferred option for a couple reasons. One, provides a lot of redundancy within that area where you have two tanks. If you need to take one out of service for painting, you have another one to operate in its place. And it also happens to be the less expensive option, at least for initial construction. So if you look here, the red is the initial water main extension that I showed at the beginning of the presentation, which would just provide water to the South Shore Industrial Park area, and then the blue cost being what the cost of getting available fire flow to that area would be. Again, thank you very much for allowing me to present tonight, and I will entertain questions.
Okay, thank you. What I'm going to do is I'll first open up questions to the two boards here tonight, and then we'll open it up to anybody from the general public. If you have a question, I ask you, please come to the mic and just introduce yourself and your address.
Where is the new well service going to be located? You were speaking about the inter-basin transfer and constraints on the basin, and I was interested in where that new wellhead might be in relationship to the new tower that you proposed, the new tank that you proposed.
Well, we haven't necessarily picked a defined spot. We have had a desktop study done to show what areas in the town may have the right aquifer characteristics in order to equip these sources, and I believe there was one that would actually be within the South Shore Industrial Park area.
You'd also mentioned conservation of, you know, finding new sources, conservation of existing sources. Are there any options to use some of the impervious roof surfaces for collection of water? It might not be potable water, but it might be water that would be used for other functions that are non-drinking water related, might alleviate the burden on the central Aquarian source?
That's a good point. I'm not sure if that's something that we would get into, but individual businesses or business associations, I think that's something that they could try to push forward. I do know with the new Sustainable Water Management Initiative, that is one thing they're looking at as far as offsets. And if you can offset how much water you're going to be using by collecting rainwater from roofs and impervious surface and using that for alternate uses.
Thank you for coming. It's very interesting. The town of Hingham, I believe, has a water committee, and I'm just wondering if Aquarian has been in touch with the water committee about this kind of impending stress on how much water is available and how much water we might need as a town? Or is this the first time that Aquarian has known about this, this potential problem, you know, potential water shortage? That's one question. And who, who kind of in towns typically, who manages that, that supply and demand decision for the town?
All right. So the first question, I think, I don't know if I can speak further, I would admit with the committee, I know that the DCR projections were back in 2009, so...
Judy, we used to meet on a regular basis, quarterly, with the Water Supply Committee. I believe they've not met since before town meeting 2012. So there were ongoing meetings that we were always invited to attend and present an update operationally, so...
Okay.
We have reached out to the Focus Water Supply Committee recently just to see if we can meet and provide an update.
And I would say, I don't know if I can necessarily speak to other towns, I can speak to my history alone, and that would be the ones previously with the town of Walsley, the Water and Sewer Division, and then therefore was tasked with looking at this sort of item.
So they had, there was a private company that owned the water company, or it was a town?
It was a town.
Oh, it was a town, yeah. I'm just wondering, in towns where we have this kind of situation, who seems like there's this need for voice of the town as far as what should happen?
That's why I did mention that we have that Water Balance Plan.
Right.
That's one thing that directly speaks to this. And if you look back at the slide where we had the 2004 through 2012, well, we've had significant economic growth in that time period, and we've been able to maintain a, you know, consistent level consumption.
I have another question about getting to this overage is, as far as I understand from maybe other projects we've worked on, is that right now in Hingham, there's about, we lose about 20% or somewhere from 50 and 20% of our water due to leaking pipes and things like that? Do you know if that's the right number?
So currently, our unaccounted for water from January through August 2013 is 18%.
18%. So is that a typical number? And if we were to address improving that number from the 18% to 9%, you know, reduce it by half to 9%, how would it change? it by half to 9%, how would it change that supply and demand gap?
So I think it would positively change that supply and demand gap. And I will also state that unaccounted-for water is something that we're looking into and actively moving forward on trying to get that number down. Just this year, we typically only do one round of leak detection. We actually brought a contractor in to do a second round just to do what we can to curb that. But it is an important issue and one that we continue to address.
And is there other, are there other efforts to sort of shift, you know, it seems like there's an opportunity here in South Hingham to develop new water sources with new development. But if that weren't, if that area were not going to be developed, there's still this gap, right, that would happen anyway. So is Aquarian sort of looking ahead and trying to develop new sources to prepare for that gap in 10 years or 20 years?
Seventeen years.
In 17 years? Or are there other sort of measures that you're looking at, like to change the way we consume water?
Yeah, I think that just as far as regular economic growth, we have not begun to look into new sources, and I think that we would continue down the path that you were stating, looking at other things that add up to that unaccounted-for water, keeping the Water Balance Plan in place. And then, you know, this possibility of, you know, better educating the public about irrigation and trying to get the high demand and summer consumption down.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's very helpful.
I'm trying to get a sense of the, what is the balance needed for the new projected development as a percentage over the current demand?
So for the South Shore?
For the South Shore Industrial Park and also for the Bristol Brothers property, if that was fully built out, what kind of a percentage increase would that require in the, in the water supply to service that compared to the current existing water uses we have now?
Yeah, so I think if I recall correctly, the South Shore Industrial Park would be 0.14 average million gallons per day, and Bristol Brothers 0.19 million gallons per day. So that is approximately 10% of 3.51.
So about a 10% increase, and that would be development in that area of the town. Are there other development increases that the Aquarian company is looking at relative to Bohasset or Hall or the northern part of the town in terms of increased demand? I'm thinking Shipyard or a lot of the development and those other areas. Is that factored into the, that percentage?
It is not, no. We don't have many big developments in front of us at this time. The Shipyard is one that was, they filled out the whole Water Balance Plan application very, because of the size of it, it was actually quite large. And so that has already been dealt with, and as they continue to develop, the Shipyard has all been taken care of through that Water Balance Plan.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I was wondering if you'd give us an idea as to how you actually calculated what the projected increased demand for water would be out of the commercial area in South Hingham?
In South Shore Industrial Park?
And the other properties that are commercially zoned.
All right. I believe that they were both based on the build-out records or projections that we got from the Department of Works.
And was that a full build-out, or was that allowed or permitted as a right? Let me rephrase that. Our bylaw allows for special permits to increase the density of use in the commercial zones. Did you assume it was the development as a right, or did you assume that there would be an increase as a result of applications for special permits?
Unfortunately, I do not know the answer to that. I believe that we used exactly what the D B W had given us. So I don't know what criteria they used for build-out, but even the developable lots that we showed on the first screen here all came from the D B W and what their projection was.
Did you take into consideration any properties that are currently developed and are using on-site? Let me back away from that question. Do you see any increased demand from existing uses?
I don't know. That was factored into it. I can get back to it.
Anybody from the H D S E have any questions? I think you've had the presentation before, right?
Yeah, I am, go ahead. I'm going to come up just because when we had our meeting here a couple weeks ago, people at home indicated that they had trouble hearing if people weren't in the microphone. So, Susan Sullivan, and I'm Chair of the Hingham Development Industrial Commission. Couple of things, just one, just to answer your question, when they came and presented to us a few weeks ago, I believe that John Walsh said that it was not special permit build-out, it was build-out by right estimates that they were going by. And I guess, so I've got just a couple of things that I wanted to bring up. And one is that if we're looking at this build-out, that the, what our, what our average day demand is as of 2030, and we're looking that we're going to be above whether we do the industrial park or not, I guess my question is that I would think that we would want to, if it's a three- to five-year, you know, process to look for new water source and all, that we ought to be knowing whether there's a, what we're going to be at 2020 or 2025, rather than just 2030. Because if we're going to be over by 2020, then we got to be starting now, you know, to be, or you've got to be starting now. Somebody's got to be starting now to figure this out. And I think it was back to Judy's question of whose purview is this, you know, and who goes about doing this? So that's a major issue. That's a major question.
Yeah, well, I know the D C R projections were put out in five year blocks from 2015 to 2030, so we should be able to get that information of what the projections were for 2020.
So the question is, at what point do we, do we go over the 3.51 million gallons per day, you know, that typically? And it might be good to explain to people what happens when we do go over that.
All right. Well, I know that you provided a 100,000 gallon buffer to that 3.51 just for certain instances, but I believe what you're speaking to is that our predecessor, previous companies that owned the water, in the water company in Hingham and Bohasset, did go over that and they were issued a consent order for that.
Which, which is?
Which is basically a warning that we needed to stay within that 3.51.
And what happens if you don't stay within it?
I don't have the consent order, I don't know what their order issued at that time. But the only thing I do know is that since we've heard this water, too, that we have implemented a plan in order to stay below that. And I think that we've done that successfully.
You see where I'm going, though, just in terms of if we're at that close to capacity now, and it's a three-to-five-year process?
Well, I think one of the considerations, too, would be if there's a specific development that is pushing us to that, because I think that's going to sway how the process, which path the process takes, I would say, just as far as, if it's a future development that's going to put us over the 3.51, then we would have to work with that developer on how we're going to go forward with a new source.
And that's the next question, too, is who pays for it?
Well, I would say that as far as everything on the infrastructure that I've shown tonight, it would be developer extensions that would pay for it. So the developer that wished to develop the South Shore Industrial Park would have to pay to have the water mains installed to serve that area. The Department of Public Utilities that oversees private water companies does not allow private water companies to install water mains to service new areas on the backs of existing rate payers. So there's a couple of different options. There is the option of the developer funding the whole thing and adjusting order to develop the parcel. There's also a couple of different options where there could be an agreement with the town, with the town actually fund, and either assess severance, or they can have the town people pay for it through a bond. So I think there's multiple different avenues of being able to fund a project like that.
But you're talking if there's an increase in the industrial park, if there's a, if there's a build-out? If there's not a build-out, and it's in the course of normal, 10 years from now, five years from now, we are now over our limit, and we need to find a new water source?
I think...
Finds a source, Sue?
Yeah, as far as the source. I think that that's something that will, excuse me, will have to continue to trend our usage, excuse me, moving forward, and just make sure that we address the topic when it's necessary. I mean, we had...
So there's no answer as to who pays for that? Like, who's going to pay for the 1.5 million to, to apply and process it all?
I guess, yeah, it would depend on how it comes to be, but...
Want to answer a question?
Sort of. No, I, you know, it's, it's an important question. I mean, if, if five years from now, if in two years, we need to increase our water source, change or add to our water source, who's paying for it? Is it us? Is it Aquarian? Is it...
That's a great question, and something that we'll have to look into, and I think we'll have this.
It's one of the things we look into, Sue, is that if we go into early, I mean, it's a capital improvement, and so it is built into rates. And so if we go in and, you know, go into prematurely, then folk, you know, we have to raise rates. So we're always mindful of trying to keep that, it's a really delicate balance because we are close, but to the same extent, if you look at that 10-year from 2004 to 2012, we've remained under, and that's due to conservation efforts, the Water Balance Plan, folks are just more mindful that, you know, they don't want, they don't want to use, and that's with the Shipyard and all of the development that the town has seen over those years. You know, the towns, the system has still remained under. So it's a fine balance, you know, while we've done the desktop analysis to look into where we could find sources. We started down that path, but we run down that path, we're not really knowing, you know, it's a fine balance just to keep rates steady.
Can I ask one more question? I know we're really tight on time, but...
I don't know if that answered.
Just very, no, no, just very quickly, because you touched on it, Ronnie, the, we're at 18% that it gets right now. Isn't it man...
It's not 18% unaccounted-for.
Unaccounted, okay.
Leaks are just a portion of unaccounted-for.
Isn't it mandated that we get down to 10% by a certain date?
Through the permitting process, there is mandate on that, but not through the registration process.
Which means?
Our goal is to get it down.
Yeah, our goal is to get it down.
We're doing another leak detection, a second set of leak detections being done now. So our goal is to bring it down. We're not, we're not, you know, we're not happy with it.
As far as, yeah.
Are there any questions from the general public? Come on up, come up to the mic, just identify yourself and your address, please.
Hey, Paul in 338 Main Street. I was just going to say, Judy, you might, I ran across this document that's on the town website, and Aquarian had asked for Tata and Howard to do a comprehensive look at our usage through 2025. And at that point, the M W R C had said as part of the one priority in 2007, we should get down to 10% unaccounted-for water rate. So maybe you guys have been working on that since 2007, but that's definitely, speaks to your conservation, and that's something we should definitely keep pushing because it's been something that's been on the plan. And you should look at the document. It's about 126 pages, and it talks about projection of growth and what they're...
Where is it on the website?
I think I just Googled Hingham, Mass, and it's might be on the water page, or I forgot how I got there, but I got there a couple times. I can send it to you, too.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. We have time for one more question, then we have another general item we've got to get to. Anybody else?
I have a question. Is there anybody here who's a property owner in an undeveloped property in South Hingham? No? Is there anybody here from the Water Supply Committee? Okay.
Okay. All right. Well, I want to thank Aquarian for coming, and this discussion will be continuing in the future. Appreciate your time tonight, and appreciate you coming for the, for the general, you're welcome to stay for our next meeting item with the Z B A if you'd like.
Thank you. Thank you guys for coming.
All right. So can you guys pull up your extra comfy chair, and we'll squish down and we'll fit the Z B A in over here?
What do you want me to do?
We've got to find room for the Z B A crew here. I was going to say, I just have chairs.
Have we agreed on a price?
Yep. Gary, can you move down one more seat? Do you want to have Emily sit next to me? No, no, there's your own. Yeah, you sit next to me.
I heard from Tiffany about what you might be able to afford those three.
Joe, I didn't think you were here tonight. How'd we get Joe Fisher tonight? You mean we're alternated? Oh, awesome. I'll pass him down.
Okay.
Joe, because we were rushing to get going. Your schedule is...
Thank you. We have this other hearing, but we are...
Anytime, anytime. It's an ongoing... Thanks a lot.
This is the first time I saw it. I'm excited. But wow, it's ongoing, and it makes sense. I'm like, wow. Thank you.
All right. So you've got your files, roses.
Yeah.
You took them.
Joe's got to get them.
And, yeah, they're papers.
Modification of a fixing site plan associated with mixed-use special permit, two special permit, three finding symbols, and associate 1, 349 Lincoln Street. I would note for the record that this meeting is being recorded, and we're also being televised as soon as possible.
Right, thanks, Bill. And on behalf of the zoning board, it's a 7:40 p.m., and this is the hearing of the zoning board continuation, hearing of the application of Samuel's Associates for a modification of existing mixed-use special permit dated May 12, 2003. So amended under section 4 G with site plan, or if it would be done by the planning board under section I G, 1 G and 1 I, along with special permit for your party determination under section 5 A, by law, such as it is necessary, allowing the addition of another floor, transition to flat roof, the threat of exterior materials, changes in the size and number units, or the middle residential building in the Hingham Shipyard, 349 Lincoln Street, located in the industrial park district.
What I was thinking, if it's okay with you, Joe, what will I hear, any changes to the plan from the applicant? Take some questions from the board, and then we'll go to Mr. Chessia.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. And Mike, you are up.
Thank you.
Yep, go ahead. Do you want this one? Are you going to?
Could you just use a microphone if possible?
Sure. Name is Mike Fitzpatrick. I'm a project manager at Samuel's and Associates. Pleased to be back before the boards again tonight to continue the discussion on the major modification for our residential component, the shipyard. So my thought would be that I would actually pick up with a list of the action items that we had talked about, the takeaways from the last hearing, and then touch on each of those items and then at the end really turn it over to architecture, which I believe the bulk of the presentation is going to be on architecture and what we've done to the buildings based on the feedback from the last hearing. So these are the list of items that I walked away with and we touched on each of these. I'm just going to put these slides and talk through it. The first on the site plan, there's discussion on the building, the footprint of the building, the coverage, and then what happens at the end of the building where we have landscaping. The impact analysis, I went back and looked at the water, the sewer and the traffic because the last time we were before the boards, I had mentioned that there might be a change to the sewer. It's finalized. It's all reflected in what is being presented and ultimately submitted. So there is no net change to the sewer and I know the last time I was here before you, I said, oh, there might be. That's all been addressed. The FAR, I have an updated summary that I'll run through quickly. And then on the parking, I have an updated parking designation plan that just reflects what we talked about for the designation of the parking for each of the residential buildings. And then finally on architecture, and I'll let Clay Smoove, Smoove Architecture go through all those items, there are quite a few. So this plan, which I apologize. Hard to read from here, but if you flip to the. Right there. And if you look closely, can you see behind the south building footprint where we show some trees at the end of the previous footprint, there's a little blue hashed area? That is the area of the building footprint that we are taking out. And we went back and we took a closer look at the middle building and the footprint of the middle building and we identified the area of the footprint where it's changing and we did a evaluation of the net square footage being added and the net square footage being removed. So on the bottom right corner, I hope you can read it on the handout, it actually shows what those two numbers are and there's actually a net decrease of 10 square feet in the building coverage. So that plan at its full size is much more eligible. So I will submit a full-size copy of that plan, but it shows the footprints. And then again, just a touch on water, sewer and traffic.
Before, before you, again, can you go back? One of the items I thought we talked about was the house moving the building further off from the street?
We actually touched on that when we go through the architecture.
Okay.
We handled that a little bit differently when we looked at the ground floor and the upper floors.
Right.
And the shift in the upper floors to get that, let's still keep our street. So on water, sewer and traffic, so what I did is I went back and I have the final plans as far as our unit mix and the breakout. So I know what we have for two better than one better than units in the south building and what we have for two better than one better than units in the middle building. And so we did a one-to-one swap across the board. So there is no net change to the water and sewer. So that is now confirmed. And then if you flip the page, this is the updated summary sheet that identifies what the changes in square footages and unit counts are from the middle and south buildings and that reflects the current revised architecture. Still no net change. And then the next slide is the updated parking plan and the only change to this plan is that we're taking all of the residential parking, the total amount of spaces, and we're showing it in our color codes to each of the three residential buildings and it identifies a two-space-per-unit area for each of those buildings. So this is the plan that we'd like to have reattached to the, or inserted, modify the discussion permitted through. Yes?
One of those categories is called excluded due to location. What is that?
You have good eyes. No, that's, so that's the parking, that is the parking. It's associated with right now a pad that we had set aside.
Right.
Next to daycare facility and the daycare. So that's separate from shared parking is what I said.
Okay, I see.
Mike, how many spaces are in the south building that serve the middle building?
There are, there's a total of 11.
And it's a function of having first-floor uses on the, on the middle, middle building plan. I don't see any, on the west side of the middle building plan, it's white. Is that, is that retail or something? Is that open space or retail or, it's kind of hard to see in the.
On the west side?
West side of the middle building, it's not colored in and is that?
Over here?
Yeah. That's the east side, the other side, facing the water.
Facing the water.
Left side, left side.
That way?
Yeah.
Oh, that's the, that's actually the access drive that's a shared drive with the marina. So there's actually an easement in that location. So that's all circulation that's been set aside and coordinated with fire department and the marina.
But even the space that's in the island, looks like within the curb zone adjacent to the left of the middle building, it's, it's hard to read on. It's not shaded, so I'm assuming it's, it's not in the roadway either. It's this little area here. What's that?
Oh, that's the end of the building. Okay. So that is actually the part that's colored is the parking that's below that's available on the ground floor and beyond the parking is the end of the building where on the ground floor we have storage that serves residential units and then the residential.
So you're asking that this be accepted as the new parking?
Correct.
Is there another map that shows the changes from the prior plan?
From the prior plan?
There was, there was parking previously approved.
Yes.
What is changed here versus the prior? Is there, is there something that shows what the change is that's being asked for?
It would be all reflected on that plan. Do I need to just identify more clearly? Make it understandable?
This is, this is, this is the new plan.
Correct.
And I understand there's an old plan.
Yes.
All I'm asking for is the difference between the two.
The difference would be that we've incorporated the footprint for the middle building.
Right.
And we've just identified who's parking where by color coding.
Right, but there's no, there's no other change.
There is no.
This is being approved, there's no other change.
That is correct. That is correct. So the circulation roadway, the dimensional opening, I suppose, it's really just identifying within the air that we had before, here's the new parking and it's associated with this building.
So the total quantity isn't changing?
No, it's all two spaces per unit.
Right.
Correct. So any other questions or can we move on to architecture? So I'm going to turn it over to Clay Smoove with Smoove Architecture and I can walk you through the various iterations of the plan.
Good evening. Clay Smoove, Smoove Architecture. We met the last time. I, I explained my design approach for the project, which was really the idea of this land-based ship, but that we were looking at the, the north building, looking to that for a sense of the materials for the, for this new building. We're not looking on making these buildings not, not talk to each other in any way. We felt however, if you recall me bringing up the idea that this building, since perpendicular to waterfront, we felt that it should have much more of a horizontal feel on the sides of the building. And then of course we began to talk about the shipyard drive elevation. If you turn to the next slide. One of the concerns on the shipyard drive, drive elevation, if you can go to that first rewind, it's all the shipyard drive, really had to be with how this thing relates to, this building relates to the other buildings on the block, how it relates to the street and how much of a shadow it casts on the street. So a number of ideas came out of, out of this conversation that we felt were worth taking a look at. One would be to push the upper mass of the building, the upper four floors of the building back approximately 10 feet towards the water, yet maintain the street wall of the retail, which is what we did. And how we managed to do that actually is we actually maintained the base of the building in exactly its same position. We did not slide the base. We took those upper four levels and slid them waterside. So you can see here on this elevation, now there's a bit of a step there, way over on the right where the tree is, which is just to the left of the tree is the, the street wall of the retail, pushed back approximately 10 feet. Then you see the upper four stories of the building above. The other thing that we did, so that's to create greater breathing room along shipyard drive and decrease the, decrease the shadow loan affected, the effect of shadow loan in shipyard drive. And the second piece we did was to really play up, going back to the shipyard drive elevation, the cornice line of our building so that, and we'll take you through the model in a second, you can see sort of the, the wood sort of cornice line at the top. The idea really is to create a more contemporary cornice line, sort of an open trellis piece, but to create a horizontal which would match up on the left side with the eve line of the south building and really talk to the scale of the building on the street. The other thing that we did on this building is we sort of dialed it back. It was, it had a much more heavier contemporary feel. We added fenestration glass to it. We took down the amount of sort of hardy panels that were on it, which were growing up over the building, created a lot more of a symmetrical configuration in terms of its layout. And then there were two real requests that came out of this in terms of, hey, what does this building look like in its place? One is, could you go back and dig up the physical model, which we had some photos, we might have a physical model, but we had the photos of the physical model and plugged those, sketch up those, those sketchy, what do we call those things? The last time, they were, they were not full renderings. The idea of the buildings were conceptual, but the massing of the building with a little bit of color, we plugged it in to show how this building relates to the south building, specifically the fact that the south building has a sloped roof and that the peak of the south roof is roughly the same elevation as the top of the, of the building. So what we did is we walked around, sort of in a 3D sense of walking around the building to take a look at how this building and the massing of that building and the south building may relate to each other. And of course the south building is much more, much more at a conceptual level in terms of its, its design, whereas this is moved a little bit farther forward. Again, you can see the north building where, way over on the left, where I talked about the building really being responsive to the street wall, the idea of the building, although it has ship-like materials, that it's very, sort of has a townhouse vertical feel to it, whereas our building, turning perpendicular, the first building to really turn perpendicular to waterfront, really wants to have a horizontal dynamic feel to it. This is actually a view from that, looking at the north building back towards our building and back towards the south building and you really get that sense of those horizontal lines moving out to sea. This was another exhibit that we were asked to do, which was to take a photograph of the shipyard drive elevation, collage in both the conceptual south building elevation as well as the elevation of our proposed middle building. Here you really start to see the efforts that we've made to pick up that, that eve line of the south building, to bring the scale of the building down, to have a white metal above that cornice line so it almost disappears into the sky so that you get a much more sense of building of the scale of the, of the street. And then we did a quick little rendering of that, which gives a sense of how this thing marches down the street in terms of scale again. You start to see comparatively, in a comparative manner, the nature of how these buildings can relate to each other, both in terms of scale, in terms of height. But even more importantly, something I discussed once before is, this is a very, very narrow building. It's 56 feet wide, usually double over residential, 68 feet wide, and you really get a sense of how narrow of a slice this is and you get a sense of how we're maintaining that street wall of retail and really play up the shipyard drive experience. And I think that covers those of the items that we took away from the last meeting.
Any questions from any members of the board?
Looking at the, that elevation and the, the north building, that rendering you have, the sketch looking from the north, from the north building, maybe just trying to get a sense of the relationship. That's a good one there. So what you have is essentially the three stories on the north building, the bottom three stories on this building have a cornice line or a horizontal cornice line at about the same height. That's about the same height as the cornice on the brick building too. So when you're looking down the street, pretty much the three-story segment.
Yeah, because the brick building, of course, is a, is a commercial base of retail office.
So the upper white story of this would read almost like, a slightly different version, but would read similarly to the roof sloped, i.e. it's a, it's a separate linear entity that's above the cornice line, which would help.
We're trying to get it to read almost like an attic story.
Kind of like a mansard.
Yes, exactly.
The other thing, I was looking at the elevation along the street, those cantilevered blue elements. Are any of the other buildings outfitted with terraces along the streetscape, balconies or terraces? And I didn't know if you had considered on the street side of this elevation, the street elevation of this building, had you considered putting terraces in between those cantilevered elements?
Well, I know that the north building has some balconies, but that it also has some view off of the balcony. My concern here was is that there really was not much of a view from those, from those units and because the square footage counts against us, we felt it was more valuable for those, for those units to gain the square footage on the interior than on the exterior because in effect you, there's, I think it's a total of eight units that wrap on that end of the building. You know, they're denied a line share, so we try to give them a little bit more square footage on the interior.
Over the last elevation, at least on the streetscape side, I was curious to see, Todd, how you felt about that because you and I had some similar observations about that.
Sure, yeah. If you type into the mic and you could.
Todd. Todd McGrath, 187 Halsted Drive in the shipyard. I do think this is, this is a nice improvement. I like in particular the, the top story. I really think you did a nice job there and putting windows on the street facade, I think is very good. It's a little hard to see how the retail shops on the base are, you know, what those materials are, but it looks like we just can't be windows and.
It's going to be, it's going to be storefront with hardy siding, horizontal, hardy clapwood siding, fairly traditional New England field here.
Okay. It's actually consistent with the other buildings and so like the.
Across the street?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I know I arrived late last time when you were talking about the kind of design motivation. If you go back, and I'll make this brief because it may be a little too robozable for an architect, but Mike, could you go back and just show the, the shot with the smoke stack?
Is it the model?
Yeah, keep, right, yeah, right there. Go back a little. So if you are, you point out that this is the first building that'll be parallel, perpendicular rather, to shipyard drive. And when you go walking down shipyard drive, you see that smoke stack and then you get some of the vistas along shipyard drive. And when you see between the buildings, what you see are masts from all the sailors.
Right.
And interestingly, the tower that we have right on shipyard drive, I think at some point it was supposed to be a little taller and it got brought down a little. As I was walking shipyard drive, which I do a lot, it seemed to me that, I know you've got kind of the, the boat, the steamboat, or not a steamboat, but the more kind of, what kind of boat did you describe it as?
It's a little hard to see how the retail shops on the base are, you know, what those materials are, but it looks like we just can't be windows and...
It's gonna be, it's gonna be storefront with hardy siding, horizontal, hardy clapwood siding, fairly traditional New England field here.
Okay.
It's actually consistent with the other buildings, and so like the...
Across the street?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I know I arrived late last time when you were talking about the kind of design motivation. If you go back, and I'll make this brief because it may be a little too whimsical even for an architect, but Mike, could you go back and just show the shot with the smokestack?
Is it the model?
Yeah, keep, yeah, right there. Go back to the elevator. So if you are, you point out that this is the first building that will be parallel, perpendicular rather, to Shipyard Drive. And when you go walking down Shipyard Drive, you see that smokestack, and then you get some of the vistas along Shipyard Drive. And when you see between the buildings, what you see are masts from all the sailboats.
Right.
And interestingly, the tower that we have right on Shipyard Drive, I think at some point it was supposed to be a little taller and it got brought down a little. As I was walking Shipyard Drive, which I do a lot, it seemed to me that, I know you've got kind of the boat, the steamboat, or not a steamboat, but the more kind of, what kind of boat did you describe it as?
Well, it was a mix of, you know, the destroyer escorts and some of the landing ships of the war course.
Okay. As I was walking down Shipyard Drive, I couldn't help but seeing, at least a week or so ago, a lot of these masts coming out.
Whoops.
And in terms of bringing some, I don't know how these two buildings will relate to each other, the middle and the south, but there's an opportunity to bring, like with Trader Joe's, they have the cabling that holds that canopy.
Yeah.
And to, it just seemed to me there'd be an opportunity to, maybe along the lines of a sailboat, bring a canopy with cables way up, another couple stories above, and have something that's really iconic in the shipyard that evokes not so much the destroyer, but the marina we have. And that, that could be an element that was on both the middle residential and the south that could be uplift, and actually it would be something that could be seen, intentionally seen from 3A and create, again, a kind of nautical, but more sail-oriented thing with, you know, cabling and height and everything else.
Materials.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the materials, it would be, you could actually do something that is iconic, that's decorative, but still very much evoking the shipyard. So I think you've made good improvements. I still think the blue on the outside is a little maybe too contemporary for me, but I do commend you for listening to comments of Gary and others and...
Unfortunately, I don't have any photo op anymore, but I'd like to say is, on the long elevation, we actually have, there are these masts that are shown on the building. We weren't sure whether that would be something that be interested in doing, the tower would be interested in doing, it's shown on the drawings with some masts, masts kind of coming off the building if they might be uplift. The other thing interesting that runs parallel to this, of course, it's not as big a statement, is all the balconies have diagonal cable tiebacks to the, to the, to the building. Although it is a, you know, so it is a large, you know, sort of Seattle kind of effect that is, it does give some of those references.
Those masts I saw were relatively small, almost something like on Atlanta Four in Boston, kind of a gesture as opposed to something that would be is more like, you know, cable stay, something, something iconic that would really, you'd be able to see. And yet, two buildings that were going to have similar architecture, you could actually have these things that might look like sailboats next to each other, perpendicular on the street. So just a different sort of marine idea, but something that would give, give it some...
How far along is the conception designs for the south building?
How far along is the conception for the south?
Is there any way that, that is sort of a corridor, a sort of an entrance, and it's the only sort of linear one that visually connects back parking lot to the ocean or the waterfront.
Right.
So if there was any way to create the sort of element that Todd mentioned and maybe bookend into a bracket with a similar piece on the proposed south building?
Sure.
Is that something that is possible?
Yeah, so on the south building, we, we need to revisit and really pick up where we left off on the overall design of that building. So by way of this change in this request, we are setting the stage to come back in and refine the south building, the design of the south building. And, you know, it was done in 2007, and so, you know, we know going into it that there's going to be another redesign of that building. So there's plenty of opportunity to incorporate some other features on that.
And how, you know, far along with the gable ended, you know, roof design, it's sort of, it doesn't exist there now, and it seems to be sort of forced, but maybe something you really need to do there. I'm not sure.
It could be, you know, we, in the future, when we come in with the plan, I expect the same process, where we look at the massing and the roof lines and what makes sense.
Streetscape, maybe?
Exactly, yeah. And, you know, we love to fill in that piece right now, but, you know, that's the next phase of our residential development.
A couple of questions and follow-up on this south building. This building would essentially set a precedent in terms of the scale and the massing and the height along the Shipyard Drive. And I'm wondering, is this also then going to be the basis of what you would probably pursue on the south building? I mean, right now I see a three and a half story building with a sloped roof. Does that mean that the south building would be a little taller, or is the FAR such that the south building would essentially be the same in terms of its massing and a little bit shorter, maybe one story shorter than this, this middle building?
Well, if it went to a flat roof, yes. So we are, we have no plans of asking for an increase in the allotted square footage for the project. In fact, with the special permit, it is, the current special permit is maxed out. So if we revisited and transitioned to another level, we'd be looking at a much different footprint altogether. So, and if it was flat roof, we may be looking at lower than the middle building. That's true.
Just following up on Todd's idea of the mass and the, you know, I was thinking of the cable stay, kind of a structure, very thin, transparent structure. I'm wondering, I'm looking at the longitudinal elevation of the street portion on the right. I'm wondering, would you consider a way to do some kind of a vertical mast or a cable stay, which then could also be integrated into the awnings at the street level? So the awnings that are out there in the retail buildings along the street, on the left side of that slide, seem to be, you know, the cantilever projections, very small scale. Is there a way to do a mast and a cable stay where you could integrate with that kind of thin structure, the awning system along the streetscape with the upper elements of the, the blue and the, and the white of the sun? Right now, it seems, I like the way you stepped it back, it lets more sun into the streetscape, but I'm thinking the retail is one kind of identity and the building above is a slightly different identity. And is there a way to kind of make them a little bit more the same by using a cable stay structure?
I think there's a possibility to integrate some cables to hold up some canopies, you know, coming off that, the blue corners. You see the way there, there's sort of a canopy, there's these horizontal canopies right there, and then above where the, sort of like the tuning forks are going out, not that, the blue things coming forward at you. Okay, there's a potential that we might be able to extend some things off that. I mean, at the end of the day, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be a visual thing, obviously, because we probably don't need that level of support. But you certainly could tie some diagonals in there to add some dynamic quality, tying the upper levels to the lower, to the canopies.
I was looking at the left side of the moorings entry there at the, in the center of the elevation.
Oh, that's another good place.
A little bit more to the right. You have a, right there, you have a tall element there. Is that, what is that, what is the purpose of that?
The idea there was to make that, conceptually, was dear these wands, you know, and those wands might be able to be lit up eternally, sort of a fire up to kind of want. But you could imagine that that could morph itself, you know, there was a question whether it was, is that likely to happen? Was it something that was appealing both to the tenant? Because obviously, it would want to be something that goes out at night at a certain hour because the lights fail, et cetera.
Could that be the location of one of those masts that might be a vertical element with the stays?
You could actually imagine, in fact, that could be imagined with stays come off, maybe hold up a canopy, that it actually becomes the entry to the moorings. And then you, I think that would make a lot more sense. Make it a lot more sense.
Right.
Yeah, you see that, you see the gray vertical on the left, the entry?
Right here.
Yeah, if you had, if you had some diagonal cables holding up, basically a tongue sticking out, a canopy over the, where it says moorings, the moorings. And then you have some cables that will...
And then would you have cables on the other canopy?
Yeah, you might not. I think it would play, I think it would make more sense if the cables played up the moorings, which play up the upper story, and somehow you start to tie that together. Because we do actually have these cables already, as I said, on the buildings, you need to point out, the, the balconies, they actually have diagonal tiebacks.
Right here.
Yeah. Each balcony will have a diagonal sort of tieback, so it starts to tie some of that vernacular into it.
Some of the rendering shows that, yeah.
The close-up wireframe one. There, those, you can see the smaller ones on the sides have the diagonals on it. It's tough to see, it's tough to see, especially because it's so small.
You can see here, right?
Yeah, there they are.
So the diagonals.
There are the diagonals.
Yeah, that's right.
Right.
Any other questions from any, anybody on the board?
It's just that this building becomes more important now based on the sequencing of the, you know, the south building build-out. So what we're talking about, we kind of, you know, they consider, and the gateway aspect, they'd have to really play up each other. So the vernacular of this building would then want to lend itself to whatever the south building would become. They seem to be, they're becoming more one entity as opposed to two, you know, three separate pieces of this masterplan.
The south building to me becomes the ultimate sort of mix between the north building and the middle building. Because it has, it has a multi-story street wall on the south building, which is similar to the north building.
But would you step that back then? Or would you, you know?
No, I might not step that back. Here's the south building over here. Go back to the color room, because this is not a good view there. This is a better view, it's more accurate.
Right.
This south building, I mean, we haven't even, my firm has not looked at it, but, but when I look at that south building, it starts, the massing, although it's got a pitch groove, is very similar to the street wall of the north building that's already built. So I say to myself, that wants to respond to the street, very similar to the north building, and the fingers that stick out into the water want to talk to what we're doing in the middle building.
That's the view there, the importance of, like, visual clarity down to the waterfront. And right now, obviously, it's a work in progress, but whatever decisions are made on this proposal, we're going to heighten the, sort of, the design intent at the next phase.
Sure.
So, and, yeah, so, and that's why, you know, the blue wings that come out, I get, I understand the idea of motion and dynamic and that's all good. But I'm not sure, I don't want it to be contrived either. I mean, it's, it's going to be maybe mirrored again, and whatever it is, it's, you know...
Well, you know, I, to be honest with you, I don't think it's necessarily going to be mirrored again, and that's, it's very much an abstraction of what happens in the north building. The north building actually has a wing wall. It doesn't have the forks come out, because everything is, is vertical. But one of those walls slides past and actually supports some of its elements.
Yeah, it functions, it has function. This is more, and I like the shadow line that could come from that, I get that, but I'm not sure if it's just, you know, telling...
I understand.
And the cornice piece, I'm sorry, the cornice, does that come out like five, what's that doing? The new element that you added, I can't read if it's projecting out if it's...
Yeah, it's projecting. If you go to the colored rendering that we did, I think it probably shows the perspective.
Like that, there it is.
No, but better underneath that. The, it's a street view that's colored that has trees on it. Let's see if we can find it. There you go. You can see that it's, it's sticking out. It's, it's almost like a trellis element that really, you know, abstract cornice line.
Todd McGrath, 187 Halsted. Mike, could you go back to the, to the picture that showed the three buildings kind of in elevation?
Yep.
Right there. So I just, I just pose a question to the, kind of, the architects and the designers in the room. Between the south building and the middle building, that's actually a fairly wide, you know, if you, if you walk that, that's a nice open, a lot of width to that, that kind of driveway in between the buildings. And obviously, it's got, you know, it can have some nice sort of vistas, but it's, that's a big corner, right? And that's right across from, what is it, Mike, the Gap or the...
It's Bed Bath &amp; Beyond.
Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, yeah, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. And so I guess my question is, on that corner, which is a big corner when you're coming down Shipyard Drive, how, I mean, how high would, would designers feel that you could actually do something, bring up the two corners of those buildings or something to add some kind of oomph, whether it's with cables or something? That's a big prominent corner that you're going to be able to see as you come into the rotary. And I think, you know, that there's nothing magical, obviously, to the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond building, that design, that's very much a commercial, a simple commercial building. But you're looking at, you know, these are, these are two, you know, the residential buildings are the buildings that really have the, kind of, the higher design elements. And my question is, how, on that corner, what would you be willing to do to kind of, to maybe make a statement? Because I agree with Al, those two buildings should relate to each other, at least partially, even if the north, even if you're taking some cues from that north residential building as you get closer to Unleashed. But that corner is a corner, and you could do something very, very striking on that corner. And, but I think it does get back to Al's point, you'd have to have a vision for the corner, not just a vision for one building. Because that is a big prominent corner, and, you know, I don't know, I look at the Shipyard and say, now, that tower, the Vitamin Shop Building, that could be 20 feet tall.
See, it's the only visual connection, it's the only visual connection between the parking lot and the, and the waterfront. Everything else is offset.
Right. So the parking lot that you're referring to, you're saying the connection from this parking lot through here?
Yeah.
But we're talking about this corner on Shipyard Drive?
Actually, it's the corner.
You're coming...
Yeah, you come there and then it's at the, it's really...
No, it's not the intersection, Mike.
No, I see where, right here.
Right there, yeah.
Right, but you're talking about coming down Shipyard Drive and wanting to have something on this corner.
Actually, where the two buildings meet.
No, no, where the two buildings meet. Further, right there, right there, Mike. That, that corner is going to be, that corner is, if you walk, if you walk the street, particularly if you're walking by Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, that is going to be a big prominent corner.
I think of...
With a beautiful residential building.
Well, hopefully, Mike, hopefully two beautiful residential buildings.
Yes, I agree.
But I'm just saying from a design standpoint, how, you know, how, how big could you think about that corner in doing something that's really...
I think you have a really good idea there, Todd, it's at the middle, it's at the center point of the Shipyard Drive. It's almost easy distance from the entrance at 3A and the end of the drive. It's at, just after you turn, so what you're thinking of is something that would frame, a little gateway that would frame your view. Looks out towards the, out towards the ships and the boats and the harbor. If you look at this, if you put this perspective up on the screen, which is looking from the northeast, I, not that, that one, I think that that perspective shows the connection across, you know, the nice axial connection between, you know, the road, the street between the two buildings and the street that goes into the parking area. You know, it's a force, I think that's a great opportunity. Yeah, to do something that's quite tall, could be 10, 15 feet tall of buildings.
Even if it's just ornamental, but it really draws you in, it could be uplift, it could be, it could really bring some, particularly at night, some real life to, I mean, just visually, it would really...
Some of the, when you open some of the squares, I'm wondering, you go off the square to a promenade, there's a gate that frames that entrance to the promenade. And, you know, if you're something like that, I think you could do something. But I would do it very abstractly, very transparently, and maybe it's the nautical thing, maybe that's the mast across states that's really transparent, but it frames the picture.
What if, what if that element was something, as opposed to being attached to the building, something that became a landscape element that was sort of, created that gateway between the two? I don't think everything has to be marked with architecture. I think, I think there's, there's so much to be done, you know, from an urban design, from an urban design standpoint, there is places for, you know, for architecture to have towers, but I think one of the things that could be missing and could really enhance this, is really what's happening on the ground plane. There could be, you know, all sorts of opportunities. Up in this, in this zone here...
So Clay, before we go down this path, I mean...
But before I go down that path and give something away, I can't give away. Functionally, how this site's going to operate and what that, what that is, it's a drive aisle that connects to a working marina that is parking for the marina, and it's, you know, commercial use. There's a travel lift, there's boats, there's stuff moving. It hasn't been incorporated into an area that you're inviting pedestrians to go visit. It's a nice view when you're passing by it, but talking about introducing some gateway or some element to invite people into an area that's a driveway, it's access to parking for both the residential buildings, and then it's a marina that's actively moving boats and doing commercial activity.
I agree with the functionality, but I think we're talking about something that's, something more of a metaphor. And you drive in further on Shipyard Drive and you see the people of Restaurant Building. That building says a lot about the destination, as to where you're going, and that building really frames that view. It's not a large building. It's not a large building, but the form of the building gives you a sense of the destination. It's, you know, it's suggestive, it's a metaphor. I'm just wondering if it's, this could be something very transparent. It's not a tower, it's not like a tall tower at the entrance at 3A, it's almost the Inversa Dog. It's kind of light and it would, I look at that as, yes, up close, it's a functional reality, it is a roadway that goes to the marina, but also from the distance, a good distance in the parking lot, it actually, there's something else going on there. And I think that elevation shows it.
I think that there's just a lot going on here, and to add something else to mark a driveway doesn't seem kind of shipyard-y, you know, like, this is a shipyard. This was a place that was very functional, there was nothing built there that was kind of decorative, it was a place where people went to work. And I think that that design has some really nice elements, like the wave at the bottom and then the peace on the top that actually shoots out to see. And I need to see something else going in for this decorative element on a building that really is such a small part of the site and really is such a functional part of the site and doesn't, doesn't really take you anywhere. Let's, you know, if we want to add an element, let's do it to a place that takes you somewhere. But that seems kind of like, not to sound disparaging, I don't, I mean, but it seems like a waste of energy on the site, that there's other points that are more focal points on the site that you'd want to put the energy into that you guys are describing. And it sounds wonderful, but I think the party has a lot going on in my mind.
The idea of the element that is more industrial, sort of speaking to what the Shipyard was, something industrial feeling, like the cable stay and the material of whatever this element could be, doesn't have to be huge or overwhelming, just subtle.
So can I, I'm confused on what we're talking about for an element. Are we talking about attaching something, adding something here to the corner of the building with height? Are we talking about adding something between the buildings?
I suppose it was streetscape, we had the corner of the building, and it would kind of set the stage for, you know, what you might do on the South Building to kind of make that entrance point. I don't see it as a large building on, it's something that's, there's, you know, there's not here, anything, right there.
I do think, this is Shipyard Drive, so we want to make the face, the faces Shipyard Drive, obviously, as nice as we can. Judy, you're right, we don't want to overdo it, but we are inviting people to that corner. That's where they're going to get into, that's where all those residents are going to walk into their condos.
Like, you know, the design that we have of the streetscape coming down Shipyard Drive and all the elements along the way, to me, is an awful lot of invitation for pedestrians to enjoy the street, to be able to interact with the retail uses, and, you know, by the time you're done with the ground floor and adding all of your canopies, your signage, your lighting, and all these unique things, you know, from the street level, it's a, it's a great inviting place, and it's going to be great views everywhere, and it's a beautiful building that's going to be a showpiece itself. I mean, I...
I actually think the idea of the cable stay piece I like, I actually like it as a potential where the wand is at the entry to, to the residential portion of the project. I mean, if you were to take that same idea, that same wand, and move it to the corner, I think it weakens, you know?
What over here?
Yeah, if it was there. I mean, see, you could put one there, you could put one there, you could put one, I mean, you could put it at, you know, any number of different places. The other thing is, is that that tenant on the end is a pretty small retail tenant.
Oh, right here?
Yeah, that tenant over there. I mean, it's like 900,000 square feet.
Two thousand square feet.
I like the idea of marking the corner somehow, but I don't necessarily think it has to happen on this building either. I mean, it can be, you know, sometimes it's nice to have, you don't necessarily have matching, you know, matching bookends, you know, I always say that the thing that's interesting, for example, in Boston, at international places, the hat is on the lower building. You know, there's, there's these two towers and the hats on the smaller building, and choose at least a twist, put the hat on the top, on the highest building. So, you know, I think there's a lot of opportunity for other design ideas. I don't think this, the design of this excludes the idea of using that, marking that corner on the next phase is an important thing. It wasn't necessarily part of this story. I think that there is some potential, for instance, some cabling on this building without feeling applique-ish, you know, it can feel very purposeful at the entry to the building. It feels as if it's actually holding up the canopy. That canopy might not even be physically connected to the building, it may actually be held up by that, that mast. So I think...
Yeah, it was...
We have the awnings on that corner, if we add them into the canopy, so...
Turn the corner?
Right. Only if you're comfortable around it.
That's taught, I mean, turning the corner is always a nice thing.
I think what the streetscape elevation suggests is that this is making a nice statement. So what you do on the South Building, you then respond to this in a way that you'd have a centered entry to that drive, and it doesn't have to be, you know, staged or contrived, but this is setting the stage, and you probably want to respond to this in the South Building.
All right, do you want to go to John Chessia for some comments?
Sure.
From the site player perspective, there really isn't, there isn't that much going on. But, so, a couple of things, I mean, I did previously go through the section, section 4G6, and I just put together for tonight a little, some recommendations. This site has a massive set of plans, and every time something gets changed, you might get little sheets. Ultimately, I think it would be very useful to have the sheets in the set that this particular building is on, plotted and put together, all the grading, layout, utilities, because there are a few utility changes. So that, at the end of the day, at some point, it's going to be an asphalt, and someone probably is going to have to look at that and say, is this right? Having one concise set of plans to do it all with, the stamp that has all the updates would be a useful thing. So that's, that's kind of my recommendation, that sort of takes care of it, two or three. And the other thing, the architectural plan's again being developed, the prior submitted had more detail, and the board's going to want that detail as well. The, one other condition I'd recommend is that those parking spaces that are in the, sort of, on the South Building, somehow protecting them during construction of the South Building, because it looks like they'll kind of be in the way, but you still have to have them for the rent, especially if those are all sold, I guess if they aren't sold, and you might be a way to work around that, but otherwise, you want to protect those during the time. And last thing is landscaping, I mean, it's pretty weak on what's been presented, there's a bunch of wood blocks, lots, and something will be planted, but not very specific. I don't think there's an issue with the landscaping up there, we know they're not going to put something that's not going to make it look nice, because they've done it nicely already, so I'm sure it'll be nice at the end of the day. I just thought that might be something to consider.
Mike, what are you going to do with the landscaping?
Well, we would, we would install plantings along the areas at the end of the building. Wherever we have the opportunity for landscaping up against the building and in islands and drives, we would add that. It would be consistent with all the landscaping that's been installed out on the site, so the same types of plantings, ground covers, shrubbery, and trees. And what I, what I'd like to do, like we've done in the past, is that we would actually have a plan prepared by a landscape architect that we would submit that would actually be specific and call it all the species, but that would be done, you know, at which point we're going in for, when would the right point be to submit the revised landscape plan? I'm saying with the actual construction detail.
Well, staff would suggest that if the board wanted to condition landscaping, you could condition that the landscaping to be consistent with the existing landscaping on site, and then your, your final plan could come in with your actual building permit or plot plan in a nutshell respect.
And that is consistent with what we've done elsewhere, and we've gone forward and received the approval on the major modification.
Are you, are you comfortable with the rest of John's suggestions? Have you read through his...
I did read through it, I'm comfortable with it. I would absolutely update the sheets and provide the substitution pages for the overall plan set. I think that that's a, a good thing to do. Saves everybody a lot of hassle and confusion, so would absolutely do that. Anything related to utilities and easements, we would address. If there's an easement that needs relocation, we will relocate it. And then the architectural plans, the same thing as the site plans, we would absolutely submit the additional detail once Clay proceeds with whatever changes to the overall concept and nailing down the detail. And then the, didn't I touch on? Now, we would absolutely, during construction of the South Building, have a way that we would protect the 11 spaces or the spaces that are on that lot. You know, they may move a couple of times throughout construction, but they would always be there, and there'd be a way to get from the Middle Building to those spaces safely. It would just be built into our construction management plan at the time.
After construction, are there any safety issues for people residing in the Middle Building going to their parking in the South?
No, it'd be the same setup as elsewhere in the site, where if, you know, in this case, we would have a crosswalk that would be located adjacent to it, so same condition as it would be traveling within the interior parking fields and bylaws.
Is there adequate lighting for residents going in?
Absolutely. They were required to install the minimum safety lighting levels, so there's lighting on the building itself, and then there's also lighting on the street, so there is adequate lighting.
Any other questions? Let me just take a drop poll of my board. It sounds to me like we're ready to do site plan in the A3 tonight. How did everybody feel about that? Okay. I'll just, if we go through our site plan here? Yeah, all right. All right, then, we're going to go to the site plan review per page nine of the bylaw. This is under section six on page nine. In connecting the site plan, I'm going to go line item by line item. If any of members of the board would like to propose a condition, just feel free, we'll vote on it. In connecting the site plan review, the planning board shall consider the following. Line item A, protection for budding properties against detrimental uses by provisions for surface water drainage, fire hydrant location, sound, and site buffers, and preservation of views, light, and air. Protection for budding properties from negative impacts from artificial outdoor site lighting. Are there any proposed conditions under, under A? Moving to B, convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and on adjacent streets. Location of driveway openings in relation to traffic or to adjacent streets. Taking account of grade, site distances, and distances between such driveway entrances, exits, and the nearest existing street or highway intersections. Sufficiency of access for service, utility, and emergency vehicles.
I think just the parking, under construction parking, condition that we just talked about would go in that area.
Yep, okay, and that would be, so that would be, on page two of Mr. Chessia's report, he recommended that we add specific residential use parking space in the area of the approved South Residential Building. To accommodate the increased residential uses, use in the Middle Residential Building, the parking complies with requirement, the board should condition the permit on these spaces being maintained during construction of the South Residential Building. So I'd ask the record to incorporate that into our site plan review. Going to C, adequacy of the arrangement of parking, loading spaces, and traffic patterns in relation to the proposed uses of the premises, compliance with the off-street parking requirements of the bylaw.
That would be our A3.
Yeah, that'd be our A3. D, adequacy of open space, setbacks, including adequacy of landscaping in such areas, and, so Mike, you, you indicated that the landscaping, you would propose a landscaping plan, and Mary, how did you word that? That the landscaping plan would be in conformity with the existing landscaping on site?
And detailed plan would be submitted at the time of the building house.
Okay. E, the adequacy of the methods of disposal of refuse and other waste resulting from the uses permitted on the site. I think you said there was going to be no change to that, correct? Okay, all right. F, prevention and mitigation of adverse impacts on the town's resources, including without limitation, water supply, wastewater facilities, energy and public works, and public safety resources. You've informed us to be no change in those areas, correct?
Correct.
G, assurances of positive stormwater drainage, the snow melt runoff from the buildings, driveways, and from all parking, loading areas on the site, prevention of erosion, sedimentation, stormwater pollution, and management problems through site design and erosion controls in accordance with the most current versions of the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protections Stormwater Management Policy and Standards and the Massachusetts Erosion and Sediment Control Guides. Any issues there? No? All right, then, H, protection of natural and historic features, including minimizing the volume of cut and fill, the number of removed trees, of six-inch caliper larger, the removal of stone walls, obstruction of scenic views from public, publicly accessible locations. We talked about the views, I've mentioned a couple of ideas, and Gary as well, so is that, the only question I have, so, some of the ideas are proposed, are you going to wait till you do the new building to do some of that stuff? Are you going to add the cables now, or...
Well, I guess, I think we were talking about at the, at the main, the east elevation here along Shipyard Drive, they were going to do something with the mast and the cable stay to integrate the, I guess, the face of the facade a little bit with, better with the retail. I think relative to the, the idea of forming something that would frame the gateway down the street going towards, between the, the Middle Building and the South Building, I guess my sense was is that that would happen when the South Building is developed in terms of the design, and then you could have a sense of how the two are relating in terms of the design, so that's, that would happen in the review of the South Building. Is that consistent with what you guys had seen?
Any questions here?
The first four suggested conditions by Mr. Chessia also relate to the plans as approved tonight and the architectural details. Would the board want to condition those first four bullet points as part of this or as a separate criteria relating to getting your revised architectural drawings?
I would suggest that we, we condition that these, this detail we developed is part of the next submission, but that all of these points are addressed in the next submission.
And the last line item is minimizing a reasonable departure from the charitute scale of buildings in the vicinity, like previously existing on or approved for the site. I think we've discussed that in detail tonight with, with heights and some different features on the design. Anybody like to propose a condition there? All right, and subject to the conditions that have been discussed, I would make a motion to react favorably on site plan review for 349 Lincoln Street, Samuelson Associates.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? He's abstaining from the record because he wasn't here at the last, at the last, all right. And now, if we want to go through our A3 at this point, all right. So to, for A3, I turn to, on the bylaw, I turn to page five, IF2. IF2, we need to go through, under two, we go through A through, A through G for an A3. So under A, the first one, first item is use of the site is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw. Would anybody, anybody want to discuss that?
I have a question about the A3. If the parking, the number of parking spaces has stayed the same...
Yeah, I was thinking that.
Why, why does this change require a new A3?
I think that at the time of initial application, the A3 was applied for, to have the conversation about adopting a new parking scheme with the actual assigned parking and kind of clarifying, it's not that there was a change in the quantity, but just the revised parking layout. The layout, it's kind of a clarification. So for the board, if you were to find that the A3, the parking as presented... So for the board, if you were to find that the A3, the parking as presented was consistent, and in theory it hasn't changed, it's just been further clarified, you would then want to incorporate the revised plans into that for the record. So it's technically not changing, but it's a little...
The modification.
It's modified. So it's kind of splitting hairs. But if they hadn't applied for it, advertised for a public hearing, and then the board had wanted to vote on it, we wouldn't have been in a quandary with regard to timing and notice.
Okay, all right. Then although the quantity hasn't changed, the scheme has. So we'll just go through real quickly. I don't think there's going to be any, any issues with the A3. But use of the site is harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw. Any issues there? Proposed use complies with the purpose standards of the relevant sections of the bylaw. Any issues with that? C, the specific site is appropriate location with such use structure and condition compatible with the characteristics surrounding area. And D, the use as developed and operated will create positive impacts or potential adverse impacts will be mitigated on nuisance or serious hazards to vehicles or pedestrians. F, adequate and appropriate facilities exist or will be provided for in proper operation of proposed use and general purpose meets except it's disanders Stein, the criteria for the functional design of facilities, structures, stormwater management, and site construction. And as been indicated, there's no quantity, there's no change in the quantity of the parking. So then I would make a motion that we act favorably on the applicant's request for an A3 special permit parking determination.
Second.
We will need a super majority. With Walter abstaining, assuming he's going to abstain, we need at least two, but three would get us there too. So all those in favor, any kind of saying aye? Aye. Closed. Abstentions?
Abstained.
All right. All right, good luck.
Good luck.
Okay.
Before everybody goes. Since we have to act on the modification as well for the special permit. In the interest of time, I'm not going to repeat the seven criteria that Mr. Ramsey just read, but those are the criteria that we would have to make findings under as well to vote for the modification. Gentlemen, are there any other conditions? We have the site plan review conditions from the planning board which we will incorporate. Is there anything else that we want to incorporate relative to any of those findings?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Well, having said that, I would entertain a motion for, to amend the mixed-use special permit.
Aye, so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you all.
So we're going downstairs. Congratulations.
Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a request to waive site plan review for the installation of the high school greenhouse. I have summarized the application for you in your packet. Essentially, the high school has received a grant to install a replacement greenhouse in an interior courtyard to use as part of their curriculum. It's a very exciting turn of events for the high school and a benefit to the students. The project after review by staff seems fairly minor in scope and it appears to be a good candidate for a waiver of site plan review in association with building permit. The greenhouse is interior to the site and as such does not trigger any Dover-related criteria. There was an attached greenhouse in the same approximate location, although it was slightly smaller. So this is really a replacement structure. It's not like it's the first time there was ever a greenhouse there. So from permitting perspective, that's slightly different than a brand-new facility. There's existing drainage pipes in the courtyard that drain towards the front of the building. So my understanding is the drainage does not go towards the fields at all. It goes out to the front parking lot. So the drainage concerns are mitigated from respect to the fields. The pipes are 12-inch pipes and they're in good conditions. In addition, the intent is to have the greenhouse help teach green practices and there'll be rain barrels to capture the water. And Superintendent Gallo tells me that there'll be a hydroponic component to the greenhouse curriculum. So when you put all of those different factors into place, staff feels that this is a good candidate to suggest that permitting could be handled simply with the building permit and that a waiver may be appropriate for the board to consider.
Any question from the board?
So it's essentially the same use. The only thing that's different between what's there now and what would be proposed is essentially a newer structure that would replace the existing structure that everything else is related or interrelated to it. So if it's used or any of that's on the site, it's the same as what's the analysis of it. There wouldn't be much anything, is how I read it.
It's fairly accurate, except the existing structure was actually demolished already. It's demolished a few years ago, so it is gone. And then the old structure was attached to the building. This is a detached structure. It's a little bit larger than the old structure. So it's fairly close, but it's not an exact replica. That wouldn't be fair to state, but it's close enough.
Does, is the, is the detached character of this building going to change its use in any way or access? I'm just curious why it was detached from the original one, which was, would allow access directly from the building? I don't know if that...
I can't speak to that, I didn't see the detachment.
If you could just come over to the mic and speak, we have some folks at home watching. Make sure we hear what's changed, Paul. We'll also find ourselves in trouble. It's really problematic. The existing structure was made out of there probably in 1998. The science grid was open outside, now they see the whole new science grid. So everything would be open. So we tried to look at it and try to attach up to another greenhouse outside the property, but we felt that sites were going to have to be, I guess, spot together so small. But they're not. So the science project would be a problem. Katie Robinson is playing for her, the A1. We're going to be on it. They decided to have this, this might be some salt here, so it's not a problem. But it is a very durable structure. It's a, it's a bigger structure than what it was. It's all designed to today's standards. I like the idea of sustainable aspects to it. It doesn't sound like it's really much, really a change from before. Certainly, I know external changes, I guess, we're currently going to make the changes, but in the past, we have waived site plan reviews and submissions. And do you feel okay with that?
I would make a motion that we waive site plan review for the high school greenhouse.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck with it.
Have fun with it.
How's it going, Katie? Good to see you. How's everything going?
Sure, thank you.
And then we have, I think the next item, Mary, did you say that the Fox Warren Runway request a bond was withdrawn, is that correct?
It's tabled, there's a small punch list that they're working on, so we're going to bump it to the next meeting.
All right, then I would, has anybody got a chance to read the minutes of October 7th and October 21st?
Yes.
And I would entertain a motion that we act favorably on the minutes for October 7th, 2013. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd entertain a motion that we act favorably for the minutes of October 21st, 2013. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, anything else, Mary?
I'd just like to remind the board that the next MAPC workshop is Wednesday, November 13th at 7:00. And we will be posting that and we encourage you to come out. We encourage members of the public to come out and participate. And any boards or commissions that are going to be present, we need to post as a meeting. But we certainly hope that we have as good a turnout as we did at the first meeting. And I should be sending out a detailed agenda shortly on that for you.
I would say that, you know, I think all of us attended the last meeting and it was absolutely excellent. The attendance was great. There was a lot of people, it was a mixed crowd of people from elected boards, appointed boards, and just interested citizens. So you did a great job getting the word out. I think we must, had about 100 people there. And the format, the discussion format was very effective too. So if you have, contact MAPC, if they could do that small group type format, I thought it went really well.
My understanding is that the meeting will begin with a brief presentation to update you, give some more feedback on what happened at the last meeting. And then what will happen is we'll go into four or five breakout groups and each group will have a laptop and you'll be able to play through some build-out scenarios. If this happens, this is what it might look like. And so we'll be kind of hands-on with breakout groups again. And so we have central, north, and south reserved, and the lunchroom, and the east room. And so it should be pretty exciting.
So that's Wednesday, November 13th, if we could plug that. Because I know I spoke to people after the last one about what went on and they were sad to have missed it. So if you have anything to say about master planning in Hingham, this is the meeting.
There are some very constructive suggestions at the, some of the breakout groups and one of them had to do with smart growth and development opportunities over by the West Hingham commuter rail station. And I'm wondering, is, in terms of the development of some of these ideas, is that going to be part of the agenda or are they going to take the comments? They took some pretty good notes when we were having the discussion. I'm wondering, are they going to, are any of those notes available where we could see before the meeting so that we could see how it might be further developed as part of the agenda?
I have asked for copies of the notes. I know that they were having a meeting this afternoon to prepare for the meeting and then I anticipate getting a detailed agenda and some more materials from them. So I will ask again for you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And Mary, then what happens after that? How do these things get incorporated into an update of the master plan?
Some of these conversations are about projections, build-outs. And so the feedback that was heard at the first meeting about, we would like perhaps more of this in this area of town. You will see computer modeling to show you what it actually will look like if it were to happen. What if we had increased residential density by the West Hingham commuter rail station? Just as an example. You'll see a computer projection, much like you saw for the shipyard, that will show you what it might look like. Obviously, those will be generic to an extent because your regulations would be specific on design. But it's intended to help the conversation. At the end of the day, it's up to the planning board to determine if some of these suggestions or ideas are ones that the planning board would recommend, perhaps a committee to work on a change to the zoning in certain areas for transit-oriented development, you know, specific conditions. You may see an animation of a concept that was well-supported and when you see the picture of it, it may be that that's not what the group was envisioning. So the presentation and the graphics are supposed to help the conversation and help you visualize what you're talking about. But where does it go from there? That's for the planning board to get a consensus and have a further dialogue about. And it may just highlight for the board areas that you want to have a more detailed study. Perhaps something you want to pursue, maybe that's something that I need to budget some money for a planning study for in the next budget.
When will the MAPC come to us with kind of a draft update?
Well, I will ask them. They're supposed to be wrapping up by January, so...
In this process, is the goal that they would, through these forums, they're providing a sense of trends or ideas or goals that have been expressed? Would it be then the planning board that would sit and distill these and then the planning board then would update the master plan at once this has been distilled and there's been a consensus as to whether some of these we might not pursue, some we might. There might be some that involve much more research in terms of other ramifications that would, you know, be imposed on, you know, the bylaw or on other aspects of our master plan. I'm just trying to think, who's the ultimate author? Aren't we the ultimate authors for that?
The planning board is the ultimate author. The MAPC is working with grant money based on the sustainable development principles and they're trying to identify for the town where Hingham and your goals might be in line with the regional goals and objectives and where you may have different opinions. And if you were to follow the regional goals and objections around density or transit, what might that translate visually and aesthetically for Hingham in 10 years? You know, what does it mean if you were to adopt these smart growth principles, the sustainable development, if you chose to? And so there may be, there may be places where everybody is in agreement and there may be places where the town of Hingham or the planning board says, that's not quite where we want to go. Ultimately, it's the planning board's determination and your master plan is larger to some degree than just what MAPC is working on. You're having a dialogue about zoning articles. Your staff is working on an update to the affordable housing plan and we're going to have a conversation about that. So you do have some larger conversations and then you'll be setting the goals.
And I think following along that, one of the things that I've heard and, you know, just feedback is that there are some very interesting regional goals and regional tools that are out there. But also there's, I think, a strong desire to protect that which is uniquely Hingham and have that be the, kind of the principal guide. Yes, taking into, there are some good ideas about looking at some of the areas of the town and adjusting our thinking, but it's, I've heard that there's been a strong desire to keep the character and the identity that we have, you know, fully understanding that some of these ideas are good ideas.
I agree. I've heard the same comments and, you know, there are modifications or goals and objectives that the board has talked about with regard to economic development or other aspects of the plan that may not affect Hingham and Hingham's character. Staff is working on compiling a master set of feedback and I should have that for you within the next week, including the minutes from the Economic Development Forum with the HDSC. And then one of the work items for the board that I'll be working on is updating the list of goals and objectives from the last plan, seeing what needs to go in there and where do we need to circle back.
When one reads the, I reread a lot of the, over the weekend, a lot of our existing master plan in the context of the discussion that I heard at the last, at the last meeting on the, from the MAPC. It's interesting how good a document our master plan is.
It really is and I think one of the things that the planning board has said, I heard from the historic commissions and I've reiterated to the MAPC is, this isn't reinventing the wheel. The planning board has a strong master plan, the town does. The other boards have said that they look to that as guidance. And so this is more of a tweaking and a fine-tuning and a supplementing. We're not, at least that I understand, throwing away the document. We're looking to update it and make sure that it's guiding the town where the town wants to go over the next decade.
One of the other questions that I had was in the last couple of years when we've been discussing these kinds of ideas, I had understood that at the State House, there's an initiative to essentially have the bylaw, the premise of the bylaw be direct, be in direct response to the goals of the master plan. And I don't know where that initiative is in terms of the state's purview on that. Do you know if there's been any further development on that? This was something that Mark Dombrowski, was it Dombrowski was spearheading?
I haven't heard anything for the past several months with regard to consistency. But I know that internally you work to consistency because that's the dialogue that we're having with the zoning articles and the master plan. As far as formalizing at the state level, I haven't heard anything for the past several months.
Okay. Great.
Not uncommon.
Yeah, yeah.
Many states do that.
All right, well, it's 9:00 now, so...
Can I ask two quick questions, very quick? First is shipyard traffic look back? Have we made any progress on that? Have you made any progress?
I emailed the developers and I advised them to refer back to the section in the decision, which has the clear process. And they told me that they have actually been tracking the data. And so I asked them to get together as a group and to tell me how soon we could schedule... soon we could schedule that public hearing, and so, I'm waiting to hear back from them. They're checking with their consultants, and I certainly, you know, I told them that I don't want to force them to come in until their material's together, but we would like to see it very soon.
Perfect. And my second question is, it became apparent to me tonight that the town's water supply committee is an entity that we should be involving in the Aquarian conversation that we were a part of tonight, and I'm wondering if it wouldn't be appropriate for our board to send a memo to that effect to the board of selection and to the water supply committee, just urging them to, to become part of the process? Because without them, I don't think we can really go, we as a board don't really have our view over some of the issues that they were talking about tonight.
I could draft a memo for the board to look at to see if I hit on the appropriate points.
The other question I would have is in your correspondence to, with and to Aquarian, is there a way that some of the questions that were asked tonight weren't fully answered in detail? And is there a way that we could rephrase those questions back to Aquarian and get some answers? I got the sense that some of the HDSC questions and some of ours were, in general terms, responded to, but I was looking for some more.
We could invite them back.
I could do that.
Yeah, we can invite them back to meeting, follow-up portions, I mean...
There were a couple of questions where they said they'd get back to us. I know the presenter wasn't the original presenter, so I can put that in the memo, and perhaps we could have a joint meeting, a joint conversation.
Maybe at that meeting, we invite the water supply committee, too.
If I may, I'll also give the board a heads up. The conversation about the traffic at the South Shore Collaborative School is now coming back up again. And to refresh the board's memory, there were conditions about exiting traffic and no left turns that were placed primarily due to concerns about the safety of the students at the end of the day, given the topography of the road, there's a slight rise, and the prevailing speed of the traffic. And so, there's, that matter has come up and gone away, and come up and gone away. I did receive some calls from the press again today, and I understand that the town of Weymouth, the school committee, has now sent a formal letter to the town administrator, and so, the dialogue has come up again. I will, I didn't have time to call the press back today, I will call them back tomorrow, and I will answer their questions, and certainly, there is relief if there's, if, you know, I understand at the time that the applicant and the property owner were comfortable with the conditions that were imposed due to the safety conditions. My understanding is also that if the applicant or the property owner wanted to lift those conditions, they would need to make application for that, have a duly noticed public hearing, and have another conversation with the board about that. That's not something staff has the authority to simply change, and so, that would be the answer that I would be giving.
And we don't have the authority to change it either, they have to come back in. The applicant would have to come back in, so...
And given the concerns about traffic, it may be that, depending on what the board wants, there may be another traffic review to fully evaluate the situation. I do understand that one way that it's been, one accommodation that's been made is that when vehicles come and drop the students off, they exit through the industrial park, because there's no students. So, there's not a concern about mixing the student traffic with the industrial traffic. It's simply a bus, or, you know, a vehicle. So, that's changed. So, it's simply in the afternoon at the exiting time, and I guess the residents in Weymouth feel that it creates an unsafe condition for them.
This is a left turn on Abington Street, is that what's going on in the afternoon?
The left turn is prohibited in the afternoon because of the slight dip in the road and the speed of the traffic, and I understand there was a fatal accident there, and so, there was serious safety concerns. It was prior to my time here, but that's my understanding.
The condition was definitely, we would, the board was taking into account the hazard of going left onto Abington Street, and certainly, there was the impact that the folks at Weymouth complained about certainly wasn't something we were able to foresee at the time. If the school comes back in and wants us to readdress, I'm sure we all could take a look at it.
I only have one other question, Mary, on the information, going back to Aquarian. On the question relative to the density of proposed development and what that meant in terms of the gallonage, could we get some better information on what that information was? I know the gentleman from Aquarian had referenced the statistics that Roger had provided, and I just wanted to get a sense, a better sense of what that baseline was.
I believe it is permitted, it's not a special permit, but I will double, I didn't want to say anything. I will double-check, but I think it was just basically by right, this is what you could do, but I will verify that for you.
Just wanted to get a sense of that.
Did you?
Will we look at this traffic situation?
Sure. Yeah.
I mean, I assume there's a file that has traffic out in there?
It was, and I think, my memory is Paul was the one who mentioned that the accidents up there and the fatality, given his, you know, his years in the police department and on the traffic committee, so feel free to consult, ask him to, I'm sure he'll remember.
Yeah. Thank you. Good to have you join us, Mike. Well, it's likely to have a brood deck on it, but...
It's official.
Congratulations. Welcome.
All right, both of you adjourn.
Second.
All right.
Good meeting, Bill. Nicely done.
You did a good job, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do enjoy that.